I'm ready to go.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Prior to the meeting starting, we are going to have the Honorable Dennis J. McCarthy provide over the swearing in ceremony of the Mayor-elect Jeremy Hing and Commissioner-elect Lenny McCarthy. The two will come on up.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Can you repeat after me? "I, Jeremy Hing, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"I, Jeremy Hing, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States."
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan?
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Mayor?
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Mayor.
"In and for the City of LaPierre, County of LaPierre, and State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities, so help me God."
"In and for the City of LaPierre and the State of Michigan, to the best of my abilities, so help me God."
All right, thank you. Congratulations. Can you raise your right hand? Can you repeat after me? "I, Lenny McCarthy..."
"I, Lenny McCarthy."
"...solemnly swear..."
"Solemnly swear."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of Michigan."
"And the Constitution of the State of Michigan."
"And I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Commissioner."
"And I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Commissioner."
"In and for the City of LaPierre."
"In and for the City of LaPierre."
"County of LaPierre."
"County of LaPierre."
"And State of Michigan."
"And State of Michigan."
"According to the best of my ability."
"According to the best of my ability."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
If a family wants to take a photo, your family's with you. All right.
And thank you, Judge McCarthy. We appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I now call the November 17th, 2025 regular meeting of the LaPierre City Commission to order. Ms. Sanchez, please call the roll.
Mayor Hing?
Here.
Commissioner Atwood?
Here.
Commissioner Brady?
Here.
Commissioner Glickman?
Here.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Here.
Commissioner Petrie?
Here.
We will now, please, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now proceed with the election of Mayor Pro Tem. Nominations are now open.
Mr. Mayor?
I recognize Commissioner Glickman.
Thank you. I would like to nominate at this time Commissioner Melissa Petrie.
Commissioner Glickman nominates Commissioner Petrie. Are there any other nominations? Commissioner Brady?
I wish to nominate Commissioner Atwood.
Commissioner Brady nominates Commissioner Atwood. Are there any further nominations? Nominations are now closed. The clerk will now call, roll in alphabetical order for each nominee. Ms. Sanchez?
Okay, for Commissioner Petrie as Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Yes.
For Commissioner Atwood. Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Glickman?
No.
Commissioner McCarthy?
No.
Commissioner Petrie?
No.
All right. Congratulations to Commissioner Petrie. And we can take a... If we could take a moment before we take our approval of the agenda, the Chair wishes to propose an amendment. As this is the first regular meeting seated with newly sworn commissioners, we have not had adequate time to review several substantial items appearing under administrative reports, the city manager's report, and unfinished business. These include event applications, zoning matters, road proposals, and appointments. You'll find these in sections G, H, and J. I feel that it is important to do research and be deliberative about our actions. It's more important to get things right rather than to get them fast. To ensure transparency, proper notice, and adequate review, the Chair moves to postpone all items under sections G, H, and J to the next regular meeting on December 1st, 2025. That is the motion of the Chair. Is there a second?
Mr. Francis, is the Chair capable of making a motion?
In the past, we haven't. I'm not aware of your procedural rules if that generally the mayor does not make the motion.
He can ask if that motion can be made.
If that's custom, can you please, Mr. Francis, provide or cite your authority?
I...custom.
Okay. Okay. Is it then custom, Mary? Because I had my script for adjournment, which I believe I follow custom of the previous mayor, Mark Court, where she moves to adjourn the meeting. Is that custom?
In this body, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Francis, I believe also in Roberts' Rules of Order, if adjournment is written into the agenda, it's the only remaining item, then the Chairperson can call for adjournment without a motion or second. And that's generally what's occurred here as well, yes.
Okay. Then the Chair has stated a proposed motion. Do I have a motion?
Point of order, I don't think that we've even gotten a proper motion to be looking for seconds.
I'm not asking for a second. I'm asking for a motion.
You're asking for a motion?
I'll entertain a motion right now.
I move that exactly what you just said. I don't have it written down, but I move that we postpone, let's see, any action, the administrative reports, which would be G, H, J, until the next meeting, December 1st.
Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Glickman. There is a motion and support. Motion from Commissioner Petrie and support from Commissioner Glickman to postpone the actions under sections G, H, and J until the next regular meeting on December 1st, 2025. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Brady?
Can you let us know why you're canceling everything on the meeting?
I can repeat myself.
I'm asking the person who's made the motion.
Okay.
Okay, I made the motion because as Jeremy said, or as Mr. Mayor said, Lynn McCarthy and Jeremy are new. There was a lot of detailed information, some of which we just got today, this afternoon, to finish one of the things. And they've had an awful lot of information thrown at them. And if that's what they feel comfortable with, I want to support that. This is our first meeting. I want to support what makes them feel comfortable to move forward. I don't think it's unreasonable. None of it is an emergency or pending, you know, anything emergent.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is...there's three items on here that are all introductions. One's an introduction. Two is a set public hearing. So that is ample amount of time to look through all the information. So I don't understand why you would be removing those from tonight's agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Not at this time, Mr. Womack. I'm going to answer...I'm going to answer Commissioner Atwood for a second. To answer your question, Commissioner Atwood, I haven't had adequate time. Neither has Commissioner McCarthy. I've stated the reason why. And I have not approved this agenda. So if you'd like, I can adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, it's up to you.
Commissioner McCarthy?
I have a question. If you adjourn these, are we still allowed to discuss them at all on the end while it happens? Okay, just need to have that clarity. Someone took their head over there. Am I right? If they're taken off, we don't discuss them till...okay, perfect. Thank you. Just needed that clarity.
Mr. Mayor, come in.
Yes, Mr. Womack.
So one of the hallmarks of the commission meeting is that you can discuss these items and still not take actions. Or take an action that would be of a delaying type of manner, such as tabling to another meeting. You know, sometimes by discussing the matter, the commission members find that they do have sufficient information to approve or move forward. So it's a little irregular for the board or the mayor to attempt to, without discussing the matter at least, to just part launch, say, "We're going to discuss these at another meeting." Because then what happens if we get to the next meeting and then we say, "Well, we wish we had discussed it a little bit more." Today is an opportunity to discuss these matters. And then if you don't feel comfortable moving forward, then it's proper to make a motion to table for another meeting. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you for your opinion, Mr. Womack. We will proceed. If there is no further discussion, then we'll proceed with a roll call vote.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. It has been moved...and seconded. I'm sorry. A motion is now in order to approve the agenda as amended. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Glickman?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda of November 17th as amended.
A motion has been moved by Commissioner Glickman and supported by Commissioner Petrie to approve the November 17th, 2025 agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Ms. Sanchez, the roll call, please.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Petrie?
I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
It is moved by Commissioner Petrie and supported by Commissioner Glickman to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held November 3rd, 2025. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Brady?
Commissioner McCarthy wasn't here, so she can't vote on whether or not she'll approve the minutes.
Yes, she can.
She wasn't here for the minutes.
I understand. It's candidly debatable whether it should even be voted on, but yeah, it's...it did happen.
Any further discussion?
So this is one of those instances where custom probably would allow the minutes to be voted on, but under Roberts' rules, it probably wouldn't.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you cite the authority?
Roberts' Rules of Order. Would you like me to go to the specific citation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Read it.
Please give me a few minutes. Would you like to adjourn the meeting at this time?
We're going to take a brief recess for two minutes. All right, the recess is now over. Mr. Womack?
So I'm looking at the city's rules and procedures of the City Commission, page nine. This would be considered a standing rule under Roberts' Rules of Order. A commission member should not vote on the question of approving minutes to be corrected or amended of a meeting in which a member was absent for the reason that such member is unable to determine the accuracy of such minutes. However, as we discussed briefly in the hallway, it has been the custom of the commission, and not just this board, also other boards of the city, that a member has, I know just for a fact, voted on the minutes of meetings that they did not attend. Now, I don't have citation to that. It's obviously a lot of information for me to keep in my head, but I've seen it done. And of course, those were all done by voice vote, generally unanimous. But those are the two rules that we have to consider regarding this specifically.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. Mr...well, before I ask, the Chair recognizes Commissioner McCarthy.
Can I just abstain?
You can.
Then it just goes forward?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, if I can ask, does she place the reason for the abstention on the record?
I will get there, but before we have her abstain and place her reason, I would like to ask you a question. Since we have two conflicting policies, we have one that's clearly stated that a commissioner that was absent during the meeting of the minutes in question to be voted on should not place a vote, but we also have a rule that the custom should be enforced. Both of those conflict in this moment with this particular topic. What is your legal opinion?
Our rules allow for suspension of the rules, which I would only assume is what occurred when the commissioners voted in the past.
Okay. All right. Or maybe not...
Maybe not a formal...
Maybe no contest against it?
Correct.
That was out of order, that sort of thing?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Francis. And Commissioner McCarthy, you would like to withdraw your vote from the minutes?
I would.
Can you please state why?
I would like to abstain from my vote on the minutes because I wasn't at that meeting. This is my first meeting in here as an active city commissioner, so I can't vote for it to verify the minutes.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes that. I don't think it needs to be voted on. And we're ready for a roll call vote. Ms. Sanchez, for the approval of the minutes?
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner...Oops, McCarthy?
Abstain.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will now open public comments. I believe we have a...someone on our list for the first section of public comments tonight, and that is LaPierre County Commissioner Brad Hagadon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greetings as always. Do you mind...is this yours? Yeah. Well, I didn't want to...I didn't want to interrupt yourself. First off, on behalf of LaPierre County Government, I want to say congratulations to you, Lenny, and you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I look forward to you both being here. I have three things that we're going to be doing on Thursday's agenda. We have a grant to cover 50% of the new bulletproof and stab-proof vest for the Sheriff's Department. We have a DNR grant to do maintenance on the Polyand Trail. And then we are going to be voting on to accept the mental health court grant to the tune of $67,522. And with that, I want to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. Go Lions.
Thank you, Mr. Hagadon. Okay. We now open the floor to public comments to the public. I want to remind everyone that per our rules and procedures, each speaker has three minutes. When the timer ends, your turn is over. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a public comment? Please raise your hand. Commissioner Petrie?
I'd like to pray. Holy Spirit, we invite your presence here in this room, in this block, on this city, in our entire city, state, and country. Oh Father, we need you. Thank you for all that you do for our city. Thank you for your hand of protection on the people here. Thank you for our first responders and their willingness and bravery, courage, and tireless work that they put in to protect us. Please keep your hand of protection on them. Thank you for the two new commission members and for the leadership that they bring and the service that they are offering for our city. We're grateful for it. Thank you for the past commissioners who have given their service and time. We also are grateful for that. We pray that you'd be with this meeting tonight, with every single person here, that you'd touch their heart, that you'd open their mind, that you'd give them peace. I pray all these things in your precious Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Any other members of the public who wish to make a public comment? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, public comments are now closed. We move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items commissioners wish to poll for separate discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Petrie, do we have support?
Support.
Commissioner Glickman? Motion has been made by Commissioner Petrie and support by Commissioner Glickman to approve the consent agenda for November 17th, 2025. Is there any discussion?
Consent agenda.
Oh, we don't have to?
No.
Okay. So there's no vote?
No.
No discussion? Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just reiterate?
Mm-hmm.
So again, depending on how you want to do custom on something like this, it's possible to take the position that you discuss briefly some of these matters and then vote on the whole thing as a mass if you want to instead. Obviously, something we could continue as part of the discussion moving forward.
I believe that's the...
Yeah.
Thank you. I agree with that.
The current custom is that there's just no discussion.
Right.
And I think you and I talked briefly about ordinances and how we might want to proceed with it in a different way. Just want to point that out.
Right now, tonight, we only have one item on the consent agenda. I think what you're getting at also is that if we have multiple items, we agree on them in bulk. And if there's any type of discussion, brief discussion, that's...but normally, we don't have discussion.
Correct.
And we just go straight to vote.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. With that being said, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We have before us the bill listing for November 17th, 2025.
Point of view, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brady?
Our previous custom was to say yes instead of to say aye. I know it seems inconsequential, but I've now trained myself to say yes. I just would like to know how you would like to proceed with that.
Why don't we have a little bit of deliberation on it? Does anybody else feel strongly about yes and no versus aye and nay? Commissioner Petrie?
I just have a question. Ramona, do you have a preference? Because you're the one who has to hear it?
Mm-hmm.
And note it. So do you prefer us to say yes or yea and nay? Or what...do you have a preference?
Okay. I believe that per some conversation that I've had with Ms. Sanchez on the topic of roll call votes, yes and no. of roll call votes, yes and no, because it's better for her for the note-taking. When we're doing the voice vote, it doesn't matter to her because you're answering affirmatively in unison or in division and then negatively, and so it doesn't matter. Commissioner Brady, do you have a very specific preference that you want to impose?
I don't know what I'm supposed to be saying.
Okay. Well, I asked all in favor, say aye. So that's what we were saying. But if you're asking going forward, do we want to adjust the custom? You're accustomed to yes and no. Are you forcing the issue right now? Would we like to do that?
I can follow whatever you say.
Okay.
Just when you said aye.
It threw you off.
I instinctively was thinking yes.
Gotcha. All right. All right. All right. Okay, so we're on the bill listing. Is that correct? I've lost my place.
Yeah.
All right. We have before us the bill listing for November 17, 2025. A motion is in order. Commissioner Glickman?
I move to accept the bill listing for November 17, 2025, in the amount of $685,506.28.
A second.
Supported by-- Moved by Commissioner Glickman, supported by Commissioner Petrie to approve the bill listing for November 17, 2025, in the amount of $685,506.28. Is there any discussion? Ms. Sanchez, please, the roll call.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
Aye.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Glickman?
Aye.
Motion carried. We have no proclamations, recognitions, or resolutions, and no public hearings this evening, so we will move on to administrative reports. Administrative reports, as section G and H and J have been postponed to December 1st for our prior vote, no action will be taken on these items tonight. But Mr. Womack, do you have anything to report on those items?
I mean, without going through each individual item and if they've been struck from the record, I guess I don't have anything to say regarding City Manager's report thing.
Very good. Move on to City Manager's report. Again.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, you struck H from the agenda?
Yes.
Or B, S, and E, too?
I didn't strike it from the agenda entirely. I struck the actionability of the items G, H, and J, but I will allow for the reports to be made informatively if you have something you'd like to share.
Madam Clerk, have they been removed from the agenda? Was that the original motion?
H was removed. G, H, and J. G, H, and J were removed. That's the way I have the motion.
The motion. Remind me who made the motion?
Me.
Commissioner Petrie.
And Commissioner Petrie, is it your recollection that you use the term "remove the items" or that we would take no action on those items?
I -- I don't know.
I think--
I didn't have it written down in front of me, so I was trying to remember how you said it because--
Okay.
So I don't really--
Mr. Mayor, to the view of the point, I certainly have no problem just discussing these items briefly. Just my recollection was that the--
Point of order.
Commissioner Brady?
I think we have to go with whatever the clerk has on record. I don't think we can just decide later on--
Okay.
--if we think we said what we thought we said.
Yeah. Well, I read from my notes, so I think Ms. Petrie was trying to rearticulate the exact way that I read the motion before I was told that the commissioners needed to make that motion, so she wanted to duplicate that in effect. So I'm operating under the assumption that she repeated exactly what I said, was that we were not going to take action on those items. But I will defer to Mr. Francis. In the case that the clerk had written down that they were struck from the agenda, do we follow that instruction then?
That would be the position that the commission's in right now, I guess.
Okay. All right. Very good. Then, I'm sorry, Mr. Womack, but I was going to allow you an opportunity to give your information at least, and it seems that they've been struck entirely, so we'll move on. City Attorney's report.
I have nothing specific for the commission. Welcome aboard to the mayor and the new -- and Ms. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Being that item J has been struck from the agenda, we move on to departmental communications. We had that before us, and it will be received and filed. We move on to the final public comments of the evening, and again, I'll remind that each speaker has three minutes. Any member of the public who wishes to speak or make a public comment, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you in order that I see. Yes.
I was trying to think of a joke I could tell to lighten the seriousness in the room here tonight, but I just really wanted to get up and thank -- thank or congratulate first the new mayor and the new commissioner that are here tonight, and to thank, I thought, the previous mayor and the previous commissioner who are here tonight, too, and thank them for their service. And thank you all for running the office. I've been involved in a little bit of politics over the years, and it's not an easy position to be in, and obviously, there's a pretty thick sense in the room tonight, so hopefully, you guys will get that figured out as you move forward, and we can go along better. But thank you all for running, and thank you for doing the job, and it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you, Senator Daley.
Thank you for your--
Senator, do you see the name of the record, please?
Kevin Daley. I have your us, too. One other thing I wanted to mention, though, too. I don't live in the city of Lapeer, and I've come to these meetings before, and I've always tried to say that even though I don't live in the city of Lapeer, this is a very important group to all of us that use Lapeer as our town. You know, maybe we can't vote here, and that's obvious, but we can certainly support candidates, I think, and try to see that the city's run in the way that because we do -- I went to school here, my kids went to school here, my dad and mom went to -- the family's been here all our lives, go to church here, school here, shop here. Everything we do is in the city of Lapeer. So everything that you guys do affects all of us, not just the people living in the city. So just always remember that, if you could. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Daley. Any other public comments tonight? Seeing none, public comments are now closed. We move on to closing comments. Commissioners? Commissioners? Commissioner Glickman?
I'm the only one? Okay. First of all, congratulations to our new mayor, Mayor Jeremy Hing, and our newly-elected Commissioner, Linny McCarthy. I am grateful for their commitment to the city of Lapeer, and welcome. I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Secondly, the Lilac Project is proud to announce the very generous gift of 10 more lilacs to the city of Lapeer. The lilacs are from Mr. Norbert Oldani of Oldani Nursery in North Branch, and I have to give a little shout-out to Jeff Hogan because he's been wonderful, writing articles, putting them in the paper about the Lilac Project, and Mr. Oldani saw that on the front page, and so that's when he called Rodney Church, and Rodney contacted me, and I contacted Mr. Oldani, and we went out there, and the people there were just so kind and so generous and so excited about the Lilac Project for the city and beyond, because as Senator Daley said, it's more than just a city. It encompasses the county and people who love to come in the city and share with the parks and the businesses and so forth. So thank you, Mr. Oldani. I hope you're watching. Also, a huge thank you to Rodney Church, Ryan Edwards, and Eric Schmidt of the Parks and Recs for their help with all the lilac plants. They've already planted a bunch within the parks, and we are really blessed to have these wonderful people who work for the city, and it's been a joy for me to meet these guys and work with them and have them embrace the project that I dreamed up. So thank you very much. Also, I've been working on a plan for the America 250 celebration. I'm pulling together ideas from a variety of sources, and we will have a decision-making meeting soon. This will encompass, of course, our DDA Director, Jim Alt. I'll be excited to work with him. Hopefully, Nita Payne. I can't think of his name. Peter, the veteran.
Pete Crowley.
And Pete Crowley. We're hoping to bring these together. I imagine this is a huge Venn diagram, that we have all these different entities that can overlap, and it'll be very synergistic so that we can have a super stupendous America 250 celebration, a celebration we can really be proud of. And lastly, then, in 10 days, we celebrate one of America's most cherished holidays, and that is Thanksgiving. It is my hope and prayer that everyone in Lapeer is warm, fed, and comforted, as we thank our most holy God for the abundant blessings in this remarkable nation, in this wonderful state, and certainly in this lovely city. God bless us all, and God bless the United States of America. I'm done.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner--
Two things. The first thing I would like to address is just to Commissioner Glickman, please include Jill Lyons from the Center for the Creative Arts. She is also working on America 250. She met in my meeting last week for the Historic Courthouse, and she has a pretty high-name person that can -- has agreed to come to Lapeer to do an outdoor concert. I mean, it's a pretty big name, and so she met with them about two weeks ago, I believe in Chicago, Minneapolis, something like that, and they agreed. She's waiting to get the date for them. She would like to participate in that, just so you know.
Yeah.
So if you could just get Jill Lyons, because she's also considering writing a grant, and you don't want to -- Jim and I talked about this. We don't want to duplicate a lot of efforts on the grants, because if too many people write for the same grant, then they don't give the grant at all. The second thing is, is I'm the head of the Historic Courthouse, the Friends, and I just wanted to say that you maybe have seen, for some of you, it's an iconic building in downtown. We consider it a gem. I've been on it for over 25 years. It closed for a $1.3 million renovation, and the exterior portion of that renovation is done. They are now moving to the interior. Technically, the historical architect tells me that it has restoration going through the end of 2026, but as of last Monday, buildings and parks at the county level told me they will be starting to do weddings. I don't know how they're going to do that without the floors done, but they are going to start scheduling weddings, rentals of the facility for weddings, second quarter of 2026, anybody interested? And we -- I -- my friends and the city and the Lapeer Community Foundation have worked together for funding of all of the floors to be finished. It was one of the things that was not inside of the $1.3 million restoration. So hopefully, I have the gentleman giving us a quote, and we should have the floors refinished, and we are trying to get that done before the first wedding in March. So again, if you have people who want to use the courthouse, it is my understanding there would be some kind of limited usage, but it would still be open and hopefully, open for the America 250.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Petrie?
I too want to welcome you, Mayor Hing, and Lynn. Thank you for all that you're going to do and already have done. And Lynn, I want to thank you for all of your hard work on the Lilac thing. You are neck-deep in it, and I appreciate all of your organizational skills and all that you're doing. Lynn, thank you for our courthouse, because it is a gem, and we love it, and thank you for all the work that you do on that. Appreciate it. I'm going to reiterate what Mr. Daley said, and I hope that we start moving forward, our wheels get greased, and we work as a team, because I'm hoping that our motives here are the love of this city and the people in it. And so that's why I'm here. I'm certainly not here for anything other than I've been here a lifetime. My family's been here a lifetime, and I love this city, and I want to see it stay a home to people that love it.
Thank you, Commissioner Petrie. Any other comments? We move on to closing comments from the City Manager.
I have no comments. Thank you.
All right. Well, I want to thank everyone who joined us this evening. I am honored to begin this term with you all, and I look forward to working together with diligence, respecting clear commitment to the people of Lapeer. We thank you, and the -- I move to adjourn. Is there a second? Commissioner Petrie? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Beginning adjourn.